I call the October 24th meeting, regular meeting, of the Portsmouth City Council to order. And ladies and gentlemen, City Council is in pink tonight because October is National Breast Cancer Awareness Month. And our pink is supplied by our Portsmouth Fire Department. As you might know, breast cancer is the second-leading cause of death for women in the United States. And even men get breast cancer, though. And we want to show our support for the fight against this terrible disease. And so that's why we're in pink. The second thing, as you know, may know, Judge Earl Mobley died this past Sunday. Judge Mobley was first the Commonwealth's Attorney, having been elected in 2001, and served from 2001 until he went on the bench as a judge in our juvenile and domestic relation court. And I would ask everybody to stand in a moment of silence as we remember his service and his family and his legacy. And then I'll ask Reverend Mark Nappel of Restore Church to give invocation, and you may sit during the invocation if you like. Then I'll ask everybody to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilman Bill Moody. First, a moment of silence for Judge Earl Mobley. And I'll also point out that the city flags are flying at half-staff. We have that right as the city, so the Portsmouth city flags are flying at half-staff until Judge Mobley's funeral. Thank you. Pastor.
Let's pray. God, thank you for the city in which we stand. Thank you for the freedoms we enjoy. God, I pray that you'd be with this meeting tonight, give our leaders wisdom. I pray that they would do all that they can to make our city a great place. God, I pray that we, as citizens, would do all that we can to be the good neighbors you've called us to be, to one another, to those around us, to those who are forgotten, to those who are overlooked. God, be with this meeting, the big details, the small details. I pray that you would give us wisdom, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yes, he is. You're right. Colleagues on council, please, we'll conduct an electronic roll call. Please indicate your presence by voting yes. And Madam Clerk, we have a quorum, and we have 100 percent attendance.
Yes, sir.
The first item of business, consideration of minutes, the minutes of a call meeting of October 10, 2017, and the minutes of a regular meeting October 10, 2017, is there a motion to adopt?
Move for adoption.
Sir, a second. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, please vote yes; opposed, no. Madam Clerk, that motion carries.
Yes, sir.
The next item is presentation of lapel pins to newly-appointed members to boards and commissions, and Madam Clerk.
Yes, sir. At this time, if Mr. Edward Barron IV would join the Vice Mayor as the Sergeant at Arms desk, Mr. Barron represents the Historic Preservation Commission.
First, let me congratulate you for your appointment. Mr. Barron has fallen in a family tradition. His father, who's sitting out in the audience, serves on our PPIC commission.
Yes.
And his godmother is up here atop, Ms., Councilwoman Elizabeth Simmons. Get his good side with the Vice Mayor. Would you like to say a few words?
Yeah, I'm just very excited to have the opportunity to serve the city in this role, and I appreciate the appointment by City Council. Thank you.
We look forward to your service, and we know you're falling in good footsteps.
Thanks.
And let me just say to those in the audience and those watching on television that we're always looking for good men and women to help us move this city forward. So you can go online, or you can contact the Clerk's office, or you can just come up here and see him and fill out an application. We'd love to have you serve with us. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Cherry. Madam Clerk, would you read at this time the protocol for speakers, which comes from our council rules and regulations?
Yes, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, City Council rules require a limit of up to five minutes to speak. As you approach the speaker's podium, you will notice a timer. At the beginning of your five minutes, you will see a green light. Four minutes into your remarks, you will notice a yellow light. At the end of five minutes, you will see a red light, hear a beep, and we ask that you conclude your comments at that time. While speakers have an opportunity to address council on matters of public concern, all comments should be made in a manner that respects the seriousness of the forum and should not be made in a belligerent, sarcastic, or demeaning fashion. A speaker who fails to observe this basic rule of decorum will be deemed out of order and not allowed to conclude his or her comments.
Thank you, ma'am. Our first item is 17-465, which is a public hearing. And Madam Clerk, would you read the caption of the public hearing, please?
Yes, sir. Public hearing on the proposed adoption by the City Council of a resolution to authorize the city to contract a debt and issue general obligation qualified zone academy bonds of the city, or notes in anticipation thereof, in a principal amount not to exceed $4,117,195 to finance the cost of the rehabilitation and repair of and the provision of equipment for certain of the public schools in the city and the cost of issuing the bonds.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
And this public hearing is now open. We have one person who's signed up to speak, and that's Donna Si. And ma'am, you have five minutes.
Good evening. My name is Donna Si, and I live in the Woodbine Farms neighborhood. 17-465 is a resolution to contract a bond debt of over $4 million to finance the repair of certain public schools and equipment and the cost of issuing bonds. On September 12th, Donna gave a presentation addressing the reappropriation for the year 2017 request to move $2.3 million from the Portsmouth Public School General Fund to the city's capital improvement projects. Also that night, there was a 17-395B resolution to amend the education category for the year 2018 Capital Improvement Fund to establish three new school projects. The work session addressing the reappropriation of money and how it was going to be spent did not add up to my understanding of what was needed and why. It certainly goes to show that here tonight, the City Council has a resolution to incur a bond debt of over $4 million and does not explain how this amount of money relates to the work session on September 12th. Also at this work session, there was a, for the year 2017, budget update regarding the recent rating agency review by Moody's Investor Services. Their report listed the challenges regarding Portsmouth's high debt level and high pension level. It also listed the revenue that was expected but not received for the year 2017, such as personal property taxes that weren't received, ambulance fee allowance correction that wasn't received, sales and use tax that wasn't received, general district court revenue from toll penalties that wasn't received. In addition, there were unbudgeted expenditures for the year 2017, such as Matthew and Helena that wasn't planned for. Other expenditures wasn't planned for was the overtime for firefighters, retiree supplement, tax relief, and violence and crime reversal initiative. Another issue was the budget transfer of over $100,000 for the fire departments' overtime due to higher-than-usual vacancies and not taking vehicles out of service. These are all examples of failure to manage the revenues from the taxpaying citizen. The end result of this poor management is the need to borrow money. The problem is, the money being borrowed is for the school division, which should not be the city's first priority. The first priority of the city is safety. It should be number one, but it isn't. What professional firefighters or professional police officers would want to come -- or a police officer would want to come to this city to work? This is why the city has so many vacancies. The citizen's safety is not a priority in this city. The priority of the city is the school system, even though the education in our schools is nothing like it was when young children were trained in the Constitution. Politics, or the science of government, was a part of the early American education for children. Their textbook was called "The Catechism on the Constitution." It contained both questions and answers concerning the principles of the American political system. The textbook was written and published in 1828 by Arthur Stansberry. This kind of education changed with the Civil War. The Civil War marked the birth of modern America. It swept away the slave civilization of the South, but it swept away almost the whole intellectual culture of the North along with it. There were a group of men who were more responsible than any other group for moving American thought into the modern world of communistic thinking. Their ideas changed the way Americans thought and continue to think about education, Republican values, liberty, justice, and tolerance. And as a consequence, they changed the way Americans live, the way they learn, the way they express their views, the way they understand themselves, and the way they treat people who are different from themselves. This is what has happened in our education system of today. The school system is not interested in the goal to stimulate and encourage the best-qualified students to undertake the tedious, arduous, and sometimes unpleasant task of filling important public offices. Instead, the schools are only interested in the materialism of the world, not the divine science of politics and educating the young of today. As one can see, this resolution, 17-465, is a prime example. Thanks for listening.
Thank you, ma'am. And this is a public hearing. You do not have to sign up to speak. Is there anybody present in the audience that wants to speak on this matter, either for or against? This is a public hearing. Seeing no one come forward, this public hearing is closed. Which brings us to unfinished business, the consideration of Item 17-442, which is an amendment to our code. It's here on its second reading. The first reading was 7:0. And Madam Clerk, would you read the caption of the ordinance, please?
Yes, sir. An ordinance to amend Chapter 40.1 of the Code of the City of Portsmouth, Virginia, pertaining to zoning for the purpose of amending parking regulations and establishing a special exception process, including by amending Tables 40.1-2.1A and G, and 40.1-2.2I and J, amending subsections 40.1-2.1D and 40.1-2.3D, amending and restating Section 40.1-5.1 in its entirety, amending Section 40.1-9.7 of Appendix A, amending Sections 702 through 705 of Appendix B, and deleting Sections 706 through 707 of Appendix B.
Thank you, ma'am. And so that we can consider this matter, is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
Second.
Sir, a second.
Second.
Good. We have a motion that's been made and duly seconded. It's ready for discussion, and we have one registered speaker, and that is Mark Godalgie-Yatroski. And sir, you've got five minutes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, honorable members of council and other interested parties. The rewrite of the parking code, parking section of code, is an opportunity to visit and revisit some aspects of parking that have not been totally satisfactory. And so I submit that the provisions for parking in downtown are inadequate. For quite some time, the business district and the residential areas that surround it have had issues in terms of accommodating the needs of the different occupants, the business owners and the residents. Old Town and Old Town South are decal-controlled areas, but Old Town is an area in which the decal control is looser than it is in Old Town South. And so, an area in which there are relatively few driveways and few garages becomes an overflow area from the business district. There is not enough space in Old Town to properly serve the needs of the residents and a growing business district. Now, when I lived in Old Town, you know, I was interested in having a healthy business district. I liked to walk. I lived in the urban core of our city because I did not want to drive everywhere that I went. And I know that a number of my former neighbors in Old Town are similarly disposed, but by the same token, when you have vehicles to park, because we are not set up in Portsmouth with a public transit system that will take you everywhere and anywhere you want to go in a timely way, it is difficult. If you're coming back from the grocery with a load and other people are parked in the residential district, you're not proximate to your home, and you have to carry your groceries for a couple of blocks, that's problematic. And residents in Old Town South have faced the same issue. So in terms of putting together the details of your parking regulations, you really need to look good and hard at how you meet the legitimate needs of the competing interests in this district in which there's overlap. I don't believe that, as they're framed at the moment, the parking regulations are adequate for this type of situation. And I anticipate that in the future, with growth in the Midtown Corridor and other sections of the city, other neighborhoods that are adjacent to business districts will face the same issues. So I ask you to give a good, hard look at reforming the way we handle parking in the city core. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Now, we're ready for discussion by council. Any discussion? Ready for the motion. All in favor of the motion to adopt the ordinance, please vote yes; opposed, no. And Madam Clerk, that motion carries unanimously.
Yes, sir.
Which brings us to Item 17-466, which is the adoption of a certain ordinance. And Madam Clerk, would you read the caption of the ordinance, please?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting $19,703 of federal asset forfeiture funds received from the United States Drug Enforcement Administration and appropriating said amount in the FY 2018 Asset Forfeiture Fund for use by the Sheriff's Department office.
Thank you. So that we consider this matter, is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
So.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. We have a motion that's been made to adopt the ordinance. It's been duly seconded. Any discussion? Ready for the question? All in favor of the motion, vote yes; opposed, no. And Madam Clerk, that motion carries.
Yes, sir.
Which brings us to Item 17-467, which is the consideration of the adoption of a certain resolution. And Madam Clerk, would you read the caption to that resolution?
Yes, sir. A resolution authorizing the issuance of up to $4,117,195 in the City of Portsmouth, Virginia, general obligation qualified zone academy bonds and setting forth the form details and provisions for the payment thereof.
So that we consider this matter, is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move for adoption.
Sir? Okay. We have a motion that's been made and duly seconded. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, please vote yes; opposed, no. And Madam Clerk, that motion carries.
Yes, sir.
Which brings us to Item 17-468, which consists of two resolutions, a Resolution A and B. We'll consider these one at a time. And Madam Clerk, would you read the preamble in Resolution A?
Yes, sir. Adoption of Resolutions approving the 2018 state legislative package and the 2018 federal legislative package. Item A, adoption of a resolution, excuse me, a resolution endorsing the city's 2018 General Assembly legislative package.
So that we can consider this matter, is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move for adoption.
Sir? Okay. We have a motion that's been made to adopt the resolution. It's been duly seconded, and we do have one speaker, and that speaker is Mr. Mark Godalgie-Yatroski. And sir, you have five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, honorable members of council and fellow interested parties. I want to applaud you on the approved state legislative initiatives, particularly for Item 2, dealing with the potential ERC buyout. I know that this is a tough slog through the General Assembly. I know that every time the matter of tolls on the Midtown and Downtown tunnels is brought up, you know, they're like the opposite of the good-hands people. It's like, we don't want to touch it. But you are right to continue to press them to reform this terrible deal, which is the poster child, not just for the Commonwealth of Virginia, but for the nation as a whole, of a deal done badly. So thank you for carrying water on this. It is essential. I remind everybody that in January, barring an act of God, the toll rate will rise by either 3.5 percent or the increase in the cost of living consumer price index. So this is necessary work. I also applaud you for continuing to press Item 4, amending the Constitution of Virginia to allow for automatic restoration of rights of people convicted of felonies who have served their time. When Virginia abolished parole, there should have been a mechanism put in place for automatic restoration of civil rights. And again, this is a tough slog in the General Assembly. There are a lot of people who believe that when you catch somebody and punish them, you should punish them in perpetuity. But I'm a believer in, you do the crime, you've done your time, then you come back out, and we wrap our arms around you and welcome you back into our society. That is how you keep people from spending the rest of their lives in lives of crime. They need to be part of the community. Lastly, there's something on here that may be a tough sell for the members of the General Assembly. They applauded you for keeping your list short. But I want to encourage you to ask them for one more item, and that is having state code changed so that there is a local option relating to relocation of monuments. The monument that we have at Courtin High Street, commonly known as the Portsmouth Confederate Monument, it's our monument. It was put here by people of Portsmouth. And decisions about its ultimate fate should be made by people of Portsmouth, not people in Richmond from all across the Commonwealth. They can make their own local decisions. But every locality should be able to make a decision based on what the community desires. And so I would ask you to urge our members of the General Assembly to put that legislation into the hopper. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. We're ready for discussion. Ready for the motion. All in favor of the motion, please vote yes; opposed, no. And Madam Clerk, that motion carries, which brings us to Item B. Would you read the caption of that ordinance? Main resolution, please.
Yes, sir. A resolution endorsing the city's 2018 federal legislative package for the 115th Congress.
So that we can consider this matter, is there a motion to adopt this resolution?
Second.
Okay. We have a motion that's been made for adoption, and it's been duly seconded. It's ready for our discussion. And we do have one registered speaker, and that is Mark Godalgie-Yatroski. And sir, you've got five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, honorable members of council and fellow interested parties. I have not seen a handout on what made the final cut in the federal legislative packet. I would hope that one of the items I had recommended to you is in there, and that is a provision in the reauthorization of the National Flood Insurance Program that would allow for installment payments on flood insurance premiums. Those people whose lenders require them to carry flood insurance pay their flood insurance premiums essentially monthly because of escrow requirements. But anybody who voluntarily purchases flood insurance must pay a lump sum. And some of those premiums, depending on where your property is located, you may not be in a prime flood zone, but you may be in a secondary flood zone. Those can be quite high. As we saw with Houston notably, Houston was definitely the worst-case scenario in the U.S., in the mainland U.S. this year. Eighty percent of the people who suffered flood damage in Houston did not have flood insurance. And one of the things that stands in the way, especially for low and moderate-income people, is the cost of the premiums. If it's broken into 12 increments that people can pay monthly, as they do with their car insurance or their regular hazard insurance, it makes it more affordable for more people. So I would ask that if this is not in what you you have before you, that you would add it on. I'm happy to note that the Hampton Roads Planning District Commission and its member communities have signed on to that as part of their legislative packet. And I would ask you to do the same. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. The Chair recognizes Dr. Whitaker.
Yes, sir. I guess this is for the city managers. Is that included in the package? Because I remember we did discuss that.
Yes, Mr. Ashby.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of city council. We, we did look at the original legislation and, and Ms. Neal and I came to the conclusion that that capacity does exist in the legislation as it exists. So it is part of the, uh, package.
So persons who are not under a mortgage, they can have installment payments on flood insurance?
The Senate bill refers to both folks who have leases as well as those who have mortgages, and speaks to the fact that they can pay in accordance with their lease. So it does contemplate multiple payments with regard to renters also.
How about, I mean, as far as homeowners, if it's a homeowner?
The, the only area that seemed to be a bit of a question, Dr. Whitaker, is, let's say you bought your home outright.
Right.
It wasn't apparent in the legislation, if you own your house outright, whether or not you could make installments. It seems to cover leasing.
Right.
And when you have a mortgage in place.
Right. That was, that was the issue that I thought was brought up, that if one has no mortgage, then they would have to make a lump sum payment. They wouldn't, they wouldn't be able to break it out in installments. And I thought we wanted to see if that could be taken forward with our legislators.
When, when Ms. Neal and I talked about the issue, we were of the impression you all were speaking to, say, the leasing aspect, not the outright ownership of the home.
Yeah, no.
But, but it does not speak to outright ownership without, without existing mortgage.
Okay, let's get a sense of council. It was my understanding, like Dr. Whitaker's, that this was to cover just that situation, that we would seek legislation to do all that you talked about, plus if you are outright, or you don't have a mortgage. Okay. Is that the consensus of council?
Yes. So, 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 I guess the question to, Senator, do we have to make a motion to add this to our package, or, or, or can you amend the language?
We, we can amend it, because we did have the discussion, and we looked at that particular issue. And as I said before, in Ms. Neal's absence, I know we looked at it with regard to that. It may require some recommendation or resolution on our part to add that additional element for those who own their property outright.
Well, the question is, can you, with our consensus here, just amend the language in the package?
Certainly.
Okay. Okay. So the package will, will contain language in addition to what it's got now, to allow that for installment payments of flood insurance in any situation. All right. Any further, any further discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Opposed, no. And that motion carries. Which brings us to item seventeen four sixty-nine, which is the consideration of a motion. And Madam Clerk, would you read the motion, please?
Yes, sir. Adoption of a motion to permit Holly Lane Ferguson to adopt a Portsmouth Police Department mounted patrol unit, or Emily, a sixteen-hand brown thoroughbred mare.
Thank you. In order for us to put this before us for our consideration, is there a motion?
Second.
Second. Okay, we have a motion, and it's been duly seconded. And the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Simmons.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to give a special shout out to Emily. Many of you know, I had an office on the corner of High and Crawford Street for twenty-plus years. And I can't tell you when Emily came to work for the City of Portsmouth, but it's been quite a long time ago. Because she used to come to my office when she was out, and we learned by accident that she liked coffee. As I stood there talking to the mounted patrol officer one morning, she dipped her nose right in the coffee and drank it. So I will miss Emily, and I want to thank Emily for her service to our police department.
Thank you, ma'am. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Opposed, no. And Madam Clerk, that motion carries.
Yes.
Which brings us to new business, item seventeen four seventy, boards and commissions. Vice Mayor Cherry?
May I have no nominations tonight?
Thank you, sir. Seventeen four seventy-one, items submitted by council members. Councilman Moody.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, I'd like to add, make a motion to add an item to the agenda.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to add an item to the agenda. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Opposed, no. And we've added an item to the agenda. That motion carries. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir.
And what is the item, Councilman Moody?
Mayor, may I move that we appoint Hope W., but the third, better known to us as Billy, to the position of city assessor with a starting salary of one hundred and five thousand dollars per year.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
We have a motion that's been made and duly seconded. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Opposed, no. And the motion carries. And not to put our new assessor on the spot, but I would like for the audience to, to see him. And sir, will you come to the podium? So that we can officially introduce. Thank you, sir. And if you, I want the public to see you. So if you'll turn around just, just for one second. This is our new assessor, and you're, you're welcome to say anything that you like in the, in the mic.
I'd just like to say, Mayor Rowe, Vice Mayor Cherry, members of council, I'm, I'm humbled right now. This has been a career goal of mine for a long time. And I'm very excited, Dr. Patton, Mr. Ashby, and Ms. White, to work with you all and your teams. And to the citizens of Portsmouth, I'm highly motivated to work hard to, to, to take care of the business of the assessor's office, so.
Thank you, sir. Congratulations. Okay. Any other, Vice Mayor Cherry?
Just, just, I'd just like to take the, take the opportunity to, to recognize the ladies from Delta Sigma Phi Tau sorority, the Portsmouth chapter, and the audience who calmly we see every month wearing red and white, but they have chosen to wear pink tonight in honor of breast cancer. So Delta's will, on occasion, wear pink.
Thank you. Would you stand, please, so we can recognize you? Thank you.
Now, most of that crowd is my lovely wife, Ms. Yvette Watkins Cherry, by the way.
Thank you all for attending. Councilwoman Simmons.
Thank you, Mayor. It's my pleasure to announce some important events that are happening in the next week. Probably the most important is actually next week, on November the first, the city and the U.S. Navy will celebrate the 250th birthday of the Norfolk Naval Shipyard in Portsmouth, Virginia, the oldest naval shipyard in the United States. And on Wednesday, November first, at three o'clock, there will be a special event in the pavilion, right here beside City Hall, where the U.S. Fleet Forces Band will play. And there will be some presentations from the Secretary of the Navy, Captain Brown, the mayor, et cetera. It is open to the public, but you need a ticket. And there are free tickets available for pickup through the city manager's office. So I would encourage you to come here, the Fleet Forces Band. They're one of the finest bands in the military service. Before that, before we get to November first, this Saturday, we have a new Halloween festival, as opposed to safe trick-or-treat that we used to have on High Street, and the Safety Town Trick-or-Treat Event. They've been combined together, and they will be at the, also at the pavilion, on the grounds of the pavilion. This Saturday, the 28th of October, from five to seven, it's free and open to the public. There'll be live music and games and a haunted house and a costume contest. And the trunk in the treats is the trunk of the police and sheriff's deputies' cars and the sides of the fire trucks. So the candy will be given out by all of our public safety officials. And of course, there'll be bounce houses and a flash mob, thriller dance, and all sorts of fun from five to seven P.M. And that's free and open to the public. And I would also give a plug for Friday night, a ticketed event sponsored by the Old Town Civic League, is about the 30th or so annual ghost walk, which takes off from Trinity Church at High and Court Street, with wonderful tour guides with stories of the haunted homes in Old Town. So that's it.
We're having a little sidebar here. Thank you for your patience.
You want to say?
No, ma'am. One of the things that we must do for our appointees is square them in, and that's what this discussion is. And we thought we had worked it out earlier. And I thank you for your patience. All right, we're ready to... On the square and end, we're going to do that in the clerk's office at a later time, not right at this moment. And we need to wait for the clerk so we can continue to... Oh, wait. Can you take over, please? Okay. And the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Lucas Burke. Ma'am, you have the floor.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I would like to amend the agenda to add an item in reference to the referendum.
Second.
We have a motion to amend the agenda to add an item in reference to the referendum. And I assume that's the referendum on the...
The monument.
On the monument. And it's been seconded?
Yes.
Okay, do you have that, Madam Clerk? All right. Any, the motion is before us to add an item to the agenda pertaining to the referendum on the moving of the monument. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Opposed, no. And Madam Clerk, that motion carries. Okay, we're ready for the item.
All right, Mr. Mayor, following our last council meeting, there was a controversial vote that went before social media and the news, the media, and a lot of discussion. After information we received from our council, Attorney Ashby, we did get information that we were not within our rights as a council to move forward with issuing a referendum. We would need to take that to our legislators at the Virginia General Assembly level and have them to make a change to our charter. And of course, my, my concern is that our charter is in place for good reason and for good cause, and it's there to protect us from, from things that we haven't done, or for whatever reason the wording is there, is for good purpose. So at this time, knowing that information and knowing that we are not within our rights to add a referendum to the ballot, I would like to present that we retract the statement of adding a referendum to the ballot until which time that we can speak with members of the General Assembly and get the proper authorization to do that.
Are you making that as a motion?
Yes, sir.
And that, so that your motion is what? Would you restate your motion, please?
Yes, I move that we retract the adding of a referendum to the ballot until which time that we are authorized by the Virginia General Assembly.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
We have a motion to retract the referendum until such time that it's authorized by the Virginia General Assembly. Is that correct?
Correct.
All right. And that motion's been seconded, ready for discussion. And the Chair recognizes Councilman Moody.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, our charter is not etched in stone. In fact, it's been changed since I've been on council. And the General Assembly does not grant us the right. As a council, we petition the General Assembly. We put in requests, just like we did probably four years ago, or maybe three years ago. At one time, if a member of council wanted to run for mayor, they had to step down, as my colleague sitting next to me did. That was changed. The consensus of council was that we needed a charter change. So we voted to change the charter, and went to the General Assembly, and it was, it was approved. You know, tonight is not about the monument. Tonight is about giving the people a voice in the decision. As I said a couple weeks ago, I can appreciate there are people that oppose the monument. I happen to support it. But I do support giving people a say-so in what our city looks like. And I don't think we should hide behind the fact that our charter doesn't allow it. Each member of council sitting on this dais is well aware that that charter can be changed. All we have to do is make a motion as a council to change the charter. And I will do that right after this vote. But I would also suggest that anyone who doesn't want the citizens of this city to have a voice in it, you can have a voice coming up on November the seventh. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Any other discussion by council? Because this is an item that's being added. The Chair will open up the mic at the lectern to citizens present who wants to speak. And you're limited to five minutes. And please remember the protocol for speakers. If you want to speak, please come to the mic and state your name.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, honorable members of council and fellow interested parties. I'm Mark Godalgie-Yatrowski, resident of Sterling Point, neighborhood of Portsmouth. I am not a lawyer, and I am not in a position to dispute the opinion of the city attorney. I wrote to you all two weeks ago, because I was unable to be present in the chamber when you were discussing the resolution, and urged you to hold a referendum on this item. My sympathies lie with those who would like the monument moved. And I'm not going to go into all the reasons for that at this point in time. But I will reiterate what I put in my letter to you in this regard. This is an issue that matters to a significant portion of our community. It's an issue that can divide us, or it can help us heal a... It's an issue that can divide us, or it can help us heal a rift that goes back to 1619 in this Commonwealth and in this country. I believe that respectful discussion of the variety of point-of-views relative to that object that occupies a very significant and historic part of our city could help us to understand each other better. And so, I wanted to encourage you at that time and at this time to keep the discussion open. It has to be respectful. We have to listen to each other, not only with our ears and our minds, but with our hearts. And we have to recognize that people have different emotional investments in the issue. Some people are totally oblivious to the concerns. A young man spoke here two weeks ago and said it was inconsequential to him. And his point was as valid as anybody else's. There are better ways for us to use our resources. But for those who have some feelings that go deeper than that about it, on any side, it's a work of art. It's a monument to the dead. It's a reminder of a terrible time in our American history, when people were forced to work for no pay because somebody stole them from their homeland by force of arms and brought them here and held them in captivity against their will. All these are valid perspectives. I think ultimately, for seven people to decide this question is inadequate in a city of close to 100,000. The people as a whole should discuss it, discuss it, and discuss it, and then make their... Make their will known. Now, demographically, there is an African-American majority in this city. And if it is the will of that majority that the statute moved, then that is democratic process at work. So, I would hope, whatever you do on this particular motion before you, that you would turn around and add to your packet an item to change the charter so the referendum can go forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Any other speakers? Please come forward. You have five minutes. Remember the rules of protocol.
My name is Donna Si, and I live in the Woodbine Farms neighborhood. My concern is, just because city council can't have a referendum, what about we, the people? How come we can't have a referendum? That doesn't make sense to me.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other speakers? Any further discussion on the part of council? All are ready for the motion. All in favor of the motion, vote yes. Opposed, no. And the motion carries for the three. The chair recognizes Councilman Moody.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to add an item to the agenda.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to add an item to the agenda, and it's been duly seconded. Any discussion? Ready for the question? All in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Opposed, no. The motion fails. Report on pending items, item 17472. Dr. Patton.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, there is no item to report back.
Which brings us to item 17473. Non-agenda speakers. Our first speaker... And I remind everybody of the protocol on speaking. Our first speaker is Barry Randall, and, sir, you have five minutes.
Good evening, Mayor Row, members of council. Before I even get into my speech on tonight that I wanted to share with you all, Mayor Row, I'm a little concerned. I was a little disappointed in the beginning of the opening of the council session because I noticed that you said that, you know, stand for the invocation, but you also noted that you can choose to sit if you like. But I noticed you didn't say that when it came to the pledge allegiance. Now, personally, I believe that you should stand. I do stand, but I didn't know if you pointed that out to kind of shine some light on those who choose to sit during the pledge allegiance to the flag. I haven't spoken down here in a while. Very disappointing. I, you know, we worked together last year, and I'm trying to see that I helped, you know, get rid of a bad council for a more cunning, sinister council. I'm still not completely sure, but after the last council meeting that I wasn't here, but I watched it on YouTube, I said, yeah, I need to speak because I noticed, you know, through social media, you all, some people, council members, and I'm not calling names because I don't want y'all to... Because, you know, I know they want you down there to hit the thing, the room out of order to shut me up. But certain council members, you know, calling people racist because they want the monument to stay. And I'm saying to myself, like, what happened? You know, we... Last year, we had about 21,000 people that came together and said it was time for a change, you know, black, white. They didn't care about all of that, that crazy stuff. Everybody wanted to move forward. And I was hurt because back in August, we had a gentleman by the name of T.J. Wright come here and speak, and he's running for Commonwealth attorney. He never mentioned that to none of you all. He never took the opportunity to say, hey, let me let Portsmouth know that I'm running for an office. And I noticed the level of disrespect that some of you all up there showed the gentleman. And he was just trying to talk about a program and share about a program that could benefit us. And some of you said, well, how can that benefit us? It's about a jail. Well, there's a jail in Chesapeake. The parents, especially people of color, they can't... There's no buses to take them to see their children out there. But I thought that maybe if you all would have really engaged them a little better than we really could have seen. But then I said to myself, I said, oh, I get it. I get it. I said, oh, my God, that's what it is. And Councilman Whitaker, you know, and you don't have to worry about ruling out of order. I'm not going to be disrespectful to him. He and I, we've disagreed a lot. But at the end of the day, he's still my brother, and I would never want to see him hurt. And that's what turned my stomach because I'm sitting at home, and I said, nah. I got a phone call. They said, you know, some of the council members got walkie-talkies, they're listening in on the police department. And some of the council members didn't get it. They says the white ones got it, but the black ones get it. I said, no, Mayor Row wouldn't allow that. That man a man of God. He wouldn't allow no foolishness like that for the white members of council to get the radios and the black ones not. I said, no, he want to turn things around. And then I remember a phone call when I was doing a ride-along with one of the consultants of the sheriff department. And I'll never forget. I said, ah, there it is, right there. Because one thing I know about our white brothers and sisters, they only turn on each other for two things, money and power. And this white Commonwealth attorney came down here just to talk to you all about a program, and you all disrespected him. I said, I get it, and I'm so sorry, Dr. Whitaker, because they showed him disrespect because they didn't want all of Portsmouth to know who he was. They didn't want Portsmouth to know that he was able to be a great guy and what have you because they can't control him. But the real deal is what? And I know when I sit down, y'all want to hit your little button and tell you little lies. But the real reason, sir, they didn't want T.J. Wright to speak is because they have to fulfill the promise that they made to the sheriff. Because the sheriff promised Stephanie white support if she would convene a grand jury against you. Shame on all of you that put too in that. Shame on all of you.
Thank you, sir. The next speaker is David Stevenson, and, sir, you've got five minutes. Chair recognizes... Sir, hold on just one sec. Chair recognizes Councilman Moody.
Thank you, Mayor.
Sir, you can sit down for a second.
Mayor is kind of an urban legend going around. The previous speaker referred to some white members of council. And you know, anytime it singled out the white members of council, the black members of council, I don't like that. We're all members of council, period. But I'm going to ask the city manager if anyone on this council has a so-called walkie-talkie or police scanner, I think is the proper name for it. I'd like to ask the city manager to weigh in on that. The mayor certainly wouldn't sign off on that, city property. So, I'm going to ask the city manager to put that urban legend to rest.
Madam City Manager.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of city council and the public who's listening, there are no radios issued to anyone on this city council or anyone in any capacity other than our police and fire. There are none. And rumors can be rumors, but they are rumors.
Thank you, ma'am. Chair recognizes Dr. Whitaker.
Just want to ask the city manager, are you stating that based on what you know?
I am stating it based on city equipment, issuance of equipment, availability to a radio system that is controlled by municipal government. There are no issuance of any radios who are tapped into a city system for police and fire authorized or given to anyone on this city council.
Thank you, ma'am. Chair recognizes Councilman...
Well, that wasn't... It wasn't my question whether it was authorized to be given to members of council. I was just curious, are you basing that on just what you know?
I have answered the question based on my position as city manager.
Right, that's what I'm... I just want to make sure we're clear, that you're saying that based on what you know, not based on all of what may have happened.
I don't know what he's talking about.
I think the question's been asked and answered. Chair recognizes Councilman Moody.
Thank you, Mayor. I think most citizens are aware enough to know that if you want a scanner, anybody in this audience can go buy a scanner. Personally, I don't want a scanner. I want to sleep well at night. I don't like reading about the bad stuff that goes on. I certainly don't want to hear it as it's in progress. The other thing is, I remember the gentleman who came to council, and I call those unpaid political commercials, but that gentleman was not disrespected. I invite anybody to go back and look at the tape, just because if somebody makes a speech before this council and they don't get any questions, it doesn't mean they've been disrespected. It means they've made their case known to council, period. So, I invite anybody to go look at that. He wasn't disrespected. Also, wasn't the Commonwealth attorney. We have a Commonwealth attorney, and that happens to be Stephanie Morales, who I think's a fine lady who's done a good job, and I'll be supporting her November the 7th. Thank you, Mayor.
The chair recognizes David Stevenson, signed up as a non-agenda speaker. Sir, you have five minutes.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. My name is David Stevenson. I live in... At One Harbor Court, and I come to you as the chairman of the Portsmouth History Commission and the vice chairman of the Historic Preservation Commission. About six months ago, the Navy sent a representative from the Facility Management Command who came to speak to both of these commissions about the naval shipyards Hammerhead Crane. She wanted to give us information. She was also going around various groups because the commanding officer of the shipyard, as I know all of you are aware, is making a decision about what's going to happen to the Hammerhead Crane. Can it be restored? Or is that too much? And is it going to have to be... Is it going to have to be taken down? The reason she came by was she said that they felt like they didn't get enough feedback from the public. So, we asked her what we could do, and we told them, you know, in our capacity, we were kind of limited. But then each commission decided on its own. We didn't meet together. It was just two meetings the same day. And we both decided that one thing we could do is to get a resolution submitted to council simply stating the importance of the Hammerhead Crane to the city of Portsmouth, to the Commonwealth, even to the United States, from the role that it's played. And I'd like to point out just some of the facts that make it such an important part of the city landscape and as well as the country itself. The Hammerhead Crane was constructed at the naval shipyard in Portsmouth circa 1938 to 1940. The crane played a crucial role in the shipyard's production of three aircraft carriers, a battleship, 16 destroyers and destroyer escorts, and numerous other ships to bolster the Allied war effort during World War II. Crane could lift 350 tons, and it was used mainly to lift gun turrets, tugboats, heavy metal, and other objects. And the crane operated between 1940 and 2001. So, for eight decades, it's been an iconic scenic landmark along the river, visible from miles away, and you can literally view it from almost any angle. My wife and I flew up to see our grandkids in Wisconsin last month, and the plane, after it left the airport, flew over the Portsmouth skyline. And I got to say, one of the... We live at Harbor Tower, but that Hammerhead Crane's a pretty good competitor of Harbor Tower. It really stands. But the importance that we feel is that as the contributions to the defense of the country, and especially from the shipyard... And my grandfather retired from Shop 31 at the shipyard. And I remember as a young boy going several times to various functions at the shipyard and kept looking up at that crane and had no idea what it was, but it was pretty dominant. We did submit the resolution for consideration, and the reason I'm here tonight is I'd like to ask that the council do consider it as soon as possible. And I think it's particularly timely now that we are approaching the 250th anniversary of the shipyard. And I think it would mean a lot from that standpoint, as well as from the standpoint of just recognition of the Hammerhead. And I'd like to thank you in advance for following through. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. The chair recognizes... The next speaker is Larry May Moore, and, sir, you have five minutes.
Good evening, everyone. Give an honor to God. Thanks, council members, for letting me be able to give a voice for the homeless people out in the street. I'm talking in consideration of the fact that the homeless in Portsmouth right now being told cannot be sitting on benches in the Old Town District. They're being told to move into the F and... Across the Effingham Street. Myself, I'm a Vietnam-era vet, 64 years old. I'm a disabled vet, homeless right now. And the plight, I mean, to go and serve my country, give blood, sweat, and tears, and to be told I can't sit on a bench, that's like taking me back through history, not to the future. I mean, I understand there are a lot of problems with the businesses complaining about different things, but to shift one problem from one area to another doesn't solve it. There's too many empty buildings in Portsmouth to say that you cannot house the homeless and give them some type of career capacity... the homeless and give them some type of career capacity. Like, a lot of them aren't just beggars and panhandlers and robbers and thieves. A lot of them have talents. A lot of them just need education, need to get, learn how to do resumes. A lot of them just need some kind of counseling. I mean, the homeless shelters open from November until, I think, for six months, a year. And that's only at night. I mean, homelessness doesn't stop during the day. That's twenty-four hours. I mean, to go into a shelter seven in the night and seven in the morning to go out to battle the, the elements, no matter what it is, it ain't like if it's snowing or raining, they say, well, you know, y'all don't have to go out. You still got to leave. So my consideration to the council would be that some of these buildings should be checked into, about being able to make some kind of preparation for the homeless to be able to at least get out of the elements. I mean, we're not saying for them to come in and just kick around and lay around, but to give, give them some kind of counseling, give them some kind of way of getting their self back to society. You know, a lot of them are ex-felons, ex-offenders, but until they can get some kind of education, they're going right back to jail, they're being put in the same situation. I was told by several officers, one officer, I mean, we have a very good police force. I mean, I commend them. I know they got a job to do, but we're getting different reactions from different ones. One told me to move across Effingham Street and you won't be bothered with it. The next night, another one said, move on the back streets, you won't be bothered. Another one told me move to Lucas Lodge, which I don't think they even know what Lucas Lodge is about. But they said, if you, you know, if they really care, if she cares, she can put y'all up. I could not believe it. But there's got to be a better way. I just hope that this council will give them consideration and not just let the homeless keep being pushed further and further back. I understand that the police have a job to do, but they're making, they're putting, if they push the ones that's downtown across Effingham, that's a whole different entity. I mean, that's where most of the drugs and alcohol is, is the bad part. That's why a lot of homeless are downtown, because they feel safer, there's more churches, they feel, they feel more secure. And to send the good ones back across Effingham Street is not going to make it any better. I just hope Mayor, Vice Mayor, and the council would just heed, you know, my consideration for y'all to do something about this. I'm just trying to be a voice for the homeless. I don't consider myself being homeless forever, but no one wakes up in the morning and says I want to be homeless. So everyone is one paycheck away from being homeless.
That's right.
You know, all of y'all up on the bench, in the morning, you can get a pink slip saying you're homeless. If you don't prepare right for your future, you're just as homeless as I am. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. And the chair recognizes Councilwoman Lucas Burke. Sir, you can sit down. You can sit down, sir.
Sir, I would like to applaud you for, for coming up and being a voice for the homeless because you made some valid points here. Homelessness does not end at seven o'clock in the morning, and it is not just six months out of the year. We are working with our city manager. We have had community meetings where we've met several people. I've met a certain person, Mr. Rudman Gardner, at the TCC, when we had the Build One Portsmouth. And there are a lot of community citizens that are interested in ways of finding how we help our homeless, how we partner with them, maybe offering them jobs. They said there's other cities that look into that, and they give them ways that maybe they beautify the community with, you know, cleaning, keeping the community clean, or keeping the, the cities free from debris and everything. So there are some options that we want to look at. We are working with our poverty task force as well. So homelessness is one of the tracks that's on there. And so we applaud you for coming forward. We all have a bleeding heart. We're working with citizens to make sure that we are combating. And of course, I am with Lucas Lodge and whoever told that, you know, that Senator Lucas is my mother, and she has a bleeding heart. She would house you all today if she could. But our program provides services to adults with developmental disabilities, and they have intellectual disabilities. So the state says that, you know, we have to keep their, their lives separate from persons who would have other issues. But thank you for coming forward tonight.
Thank you, ma'am. The chair recognizes Councilman Moody.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Maymore, first of all, I'd like to thank you for your service to our country, and also for being here tonight and sharing with us some things that sometimes we may overlook. You know, our, our city manager probably said it certainly much better than I could say it, but she, at our work session this evening, she reminded us that we will make sure that the homeless folks are treated with respect. I'd like to call on her to share with you exactly what she told us. But I, I would also like to suggest to my colleague, and we have a team that is working with business owners and things to try, and it is a balancing act. But I'd like to suggest to my colleagues and maybe to the, to the manager that we include Mr. Maymore on that team. I think we need somebody that's actually walked in his shoes. And nobody can walk in his shoes better than he can. So I think he would be a good member of that team, if, if there's concurrence.
Yes.
Let's, thank you.
You'll share with us?
Yes, I was waiting for the mayor to call.
Oh, I'm going to call in order of, let's.
Okay.
You defer, madam city clerk, I mean, city manager.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of city council. At our public work session this afternoon, I conducted a report back to city council on homeless and vagrant initiatives. And I shared with them, as I share with all citizens, there is a broad outreach of support in our city that works tirelessly daily to try to address some of the issues that we are facing, and I reported to council this evening, through our social services department and the continuing of care through Park, behavioral health care services. We have the OACES Outreach Ministry. We have the Portsmouth Volunteers for the Homeless. We have the Eggleston Cooperation we're working with. We're working with the Portsmouth Homeless Action Consortium, and with the Portsmouth Area Resources Coalition. In addition, we have over six hundred and ninety-eight thousand, five hundred and one dollars that are being expended this year through a various broad area of Shelter Plus Grants, Portsmouth Area Resources Coalition Park Grants, the Hurr Shelter. All of this adds up. And to our citizen who spoke, every day, one or any day, anyone who needs help and want assistance can go to Behavioral Health Care, Social Services, or OACES and express whatever it is that one needs help with. We have social workers out every day who meet with people, talk with people, who indicate they do not want to be in a program, they're fine where they are. And then we have Behavioral Health Care who works with citizens who may be vagrants, who could take part in some of our areas that, that deal with alcoholism. We have, last year, we had over a hundred and seventy thousand dollars for treatment for up to thirty to sixty days, and we did not get one person who wanted to be a part of a one-month away or sixty days. So that money goes back every year. Because if you don't use it for that purpose, it can't be used for anything else. We have that allotment again this year. So if you know anyone who wants treatment and willing to go away to an institution for treatment, thirty to sixty days based on the assessment, there is money available for that. So we're trying at every cause to help and address the needs of our citizens. And as I said in the meeting, and I will repeat again, every human being in the city of Portsmouth is special. We have not one treatment for one group and a different treatment for the other. We respect all mankind, and we do it every day as we work with people. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Dr. Patton. The chair recognizes Vice Mayor Cherry.
Thank you, Mayor. And the manager addressed most of what I wanted to say. But I, but I would like to add, can we, because I think Mr. Moore may, may know persons that we may not know of who, who do, or would like to receive some help. Can we not get with Mr. Moore and work with him to try to connect with, with some of those persons to make sure if they want the help, that it's available and that they, that they get it?
Yes, we can. And Mr. Pace has gone over and spoken with Mr. Moore, and we probably don't have a number to reach Mr. Moore, but we know that between now and tomorrow, we will have something to connect with him.
Yeah, okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moore, for coming.
The chair recognizes Dr. Whitaker.
Yes, I'm just curious, what are we doing as a council in regards to, we see that the president is suggesting significant cuts, which we know will impact on our social programs. Are we, are we as a council sending direction to our legislators to vote against those type of issues that will cause significant pain to a lot of people in our community, considering the poverty levels that we have, as, as well as other issues? Where are we on that?
Dr. Whitaker, that's a very good point. I think we discussed this, and we actually did a letter from me on behalf of council. Let's get that letter back out and see if we need to update it, given the current state affairs. Is that agreeable to everybody?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Well, we're relying on you, Dr. Patton, to do that. Thank you, sir. We have no further business. I remind everybody that October twenty seventeen is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Thank you for attending, and this meeting is adjourned.